I'd like to reopen the meeting for the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee, today, which is Monday, July 18th, 2016, at 7:00. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence for Captain Joe Vinoco, who is a father of four children in our school district, who recently passed, and is the husband of our chairman, Aaron Vinoco. Okay, we'll start by introduction of members.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Georgette Jarrett, Blackstone.
Wen Cob, Business Manager.
Steve Tringalli, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Alan Hibbelberger, Superintendent.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, we have our first public forum, seeing as though nobody's joining us tonight. We'll go right to the warrants. Does anybody want to make a motion for the warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants and the minutes with the
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, but the minutes with the rewording from today.
Okay, we have a motion made by Bill with the warrants and the minutes with the amendments to the minutes from today. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second made by Steve. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm going to abstain from the minutes for June 30th because
As am I, I was just going to say.
So Jane and myself will abstain from the minutes on June 30th, seeing as though we were not here. Okay. Did you want to move down?
No.
Okay. Okay. So now we are going to go through the superintendent evaluations, and we will start this. So what you have in front of you is a green folder, and in that green folder you have the SMART goals that were discussed in October, October, November. You also have the district improvement goals. Alan has, we've had this discussion, and he can go through those or put those within his evaluation. And then if you turn the page, this is just for taking notes throughout his evidence. So we will begin, and then we will finish this at our next meeting, or the rest of the evidence will come at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. Take it away.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Attached in your packet as well, I took the performance rating for the superintendent on the Summit of Evaluation, and filled it out based upon my input to how I judged my year. Also attached to that, you'll see the same performance goals, but with the measurement as well as what we had accomplished. And I do have a copy of the blog that I put out, as well as the districts, the DIP, the District Improvement Plan that we have been working on. It has been a very busy year for the district. I think a lot of times what superintendents do is far from view. I think it's important to be able to substantiate the work that I do on behalf of all stakeholders, most importantly, our students. And so that is the final evidence that Wendy had mentioned, that I will be getting to the committee, hopefully by Thursday of this week electronically, so you have that, so that you can begin to move forward. I believe that we are better than we were two years ago. I think that we have the consistency of leadership with Dr. Thompson and myself. And I look forward to the next three years with anticipation, because there is still much work to be done. I know where my shortcomings are. I know that most of you know those too. I also know what I am most proud of, and what we have done and been able to do in a very busy, busy year, with my work supporting the committee around Unit A negotiations, around transportation, around the regional agreement amendment. And I strive to represent our district in all of the groups that I belong to, the By County Collaborative, the Worcester Regional Superintendents Association, the statewide Mass Association of Superintendents, as well as the Blackstone Valley Collaborative, which is paying dividends in terms of how we recognize our staff, and as well what Dr. Thompson has been able to do with curriculum. So if there are any questions based upon what you've just been able to see here, certainly I will have the rest of the evidence for these to you, as I said, by the end of day Thursday.
Can we just go through what you have? So the first thing that we have right here in front of us is the superintendent's blog. So what standard would that fall under?
Well, that was certainly one of my performance goals around professional practice. And again, I made some progress but did not meet it. So that's what that would go through, on the professional practice goals. Bring up page one.
Right. So this said, so is this just the one blog?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the first piece of evidence submitted, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the second piece of evidence that I'm just looking at now, is this the district?
District Improvement Plan, which we used for our improvement plan for the last two years. And we have made significant progress in all of this. And I'm proud of the fact that the leadership team has been able to meet these goals of the increased student achievement through curriculum improvements, through the continued implementation of the ed eval system. We are slowly increasing our special ed achievement. We're still waiting on the data for this year to see how well we are doing. We have improved our technology through our wireless project, as well as the expanded use of the one-to-ones that we are looking forward to going forward with. We have also reviewed and analyzed Goal Five, so that both our high school and JFK's renovations are clearly defined, and the next steps would be to take that process through MSBA.
So will a new, because there's only one thing left on here that says 2017. Everything else has
Right. A new district improvement plan will be
Will be developed?
Is being developed now.
Yeah.
And we met today on it.
I guess I'm still confused at what this falls under, in terms of, are we still looking at the, at the district improvement? Is that where, I'm looking for the measurable part of the evidence. I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I think that that would certainly go towards standard for the professional What's in there really covers a couple of things, management and operations, as well as professional culture. And the evidence that I submit will be relayed and tied back to the specific standards.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have, probably next one. I have a chance to
Yeah, I think we need to start wrapping this up.
Yep.
So I think, is our next meeting August 11th?
Yes.
Okay. I think for our next meeting, we definitely need to have the measurable evidence, and we need to put this to bed, because we need to get into our next, we need to get into our next one, and I don't want to push this to, we're pushing this to our third meeting now. So I think it would be in our best interest to wrap it up, and whatever we have on the 11th, we have, and we move forward with the Survey Monkey and the assessment, the evaluation. So whatever is given to us on the 11th, meaning some
The goal.
More like measurable goals that were part of the evidence, I think we need to move forward with that and put it to rest, so that we can move forward. So is that okay with everybody on the 11th?
Yep.
Yes.
And the goal would be to have all of that evidence tied back to the standards and given to the committee by the end of day Thursday, this coming Thursday. So everyone will have that electronically.
So you'll have
Do you want us to do a Survey Monkey before the 11th, then?
No.
After week?
He'll give, he'll send his evidence, and this is, this is a really good piece of evidence to go on.
Right.
This is something that's measurable, attainable, see how many there are. So these will come on Thursday, so you'll have time to process them and presenting them. He'll be presenting them on August 11th. So we're about a month behind.
Yeah, because then we're evaluating on August 11th as well?
We can't be evaluating
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you will have all of the information
By this week.
By the end of day Thursday.
So why don't we
It has to be presented, the evidence has to be presented at a public meeting.
Oh.
Which I can do on the 11th, but you'll already have all of that
Right.
In advance.
Why can't we?
We just, it just needs to be, the evaluation needs to be made.
Publicly.
The evidence needs to be presented. As soon as the evaluation is made on Survey Monkey, after you get the evaluation, you can go ahead, after you get his evidence, you can go ahead and fill out that Survey Monkey.
Right.
But that takes time to make the Survey Monkey. So is anybody willing to make it?
If somebody shows me how, I will make it. Is it easy?
It is.
It's time consuming, probably, but
It's fairly, fairly simple to understand?
Oh, yeah.
It just, it takes playtime. So, I mean, I can do my best, I'm going on vacation, so I can do my best to get it out to the committee before the 11th. I would have to say it won't be till probably the 8th or 9th.
No, I'm glad to do it if I learn how to get on the site, I mean, just give me the details on how to get it started, and I'm glad to do it.
And there's an infrastructure built. All this is, all this is editing what the goals are.
Right. You can take, you can take one survey and copy it.
Exactly. Yeah.
Right.
And if we had that soon, we can be looking at it and move quickly.
Report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. In front of us is the vote to approve the transfer of the high school activity amount in the, in the amount of $18,619.29. This is in accordance with MGL 71, Section 47, to simply move the money from the agency account to the activity account. And again, it's the amount of $18,619.29.
So moved.
Motion made by Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Georgette, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The ayes have it.
Thank you. The next piece of business is the reappointment of a representative to the tri-count, I'm sorry, the By County Collaborative Board of Directors in all member towns. It seems to be the superintendent, and it seems to work very well, but it just needs to be an official vote by the committee to appoint me for next year.
Do we have a motion to reappoint the superintendent to the Byco Board for the 2016-2017 school year?
So moved.
Moved, motion made by Bill, seconded by Jane. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Next on the report is the 2016-2017 school calendar. I hope everyone got my one call from last evening. It is official that all staff will report on Tuesday, August 30th, and the first day of school for all students will be Wednesday, August 31st. And I believe in my, my call last night, I mentioned that you can access the entire calendar right off the website under the calendar toolbar, and that will show everything, including our projected last day of Friday, June 16th. So that is for everyone's edification. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear and reiterate that the first day of school for all of our students will be Wednesday, August 31st.
And you can view the calendar online for all the other additional PD days. They've been updated.
Yep.
And I believe Jesse's going to post that, too, so that you can see it online.
And next on the agenda is the FY16 closeout, and certainly I would defer to our business manager, Wen Cob. This is something that we do every year by MGL, and it is simply motions to make sure that the committee goes on record as having moved specific amounts of money.
The end of the year 16, we, the first motion, I clarified with our accountant, Mr. Agard, and he said it was moved, it was transferred already, so we can skip that one. The second one is to close the interest from all the capital accounts and the miscellaneous revolving accounts to E and D.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion to remove the interest fund listed on our general books ledger here to E and D.
Second. Motion made by Bill, seconded by Jane, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next one is to move Medicaid, $60,000, and the music user fee, $25,000, athletic user fee, $40,000, to FY17 budget.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to move Medicaid music user fees and athletic user fees to special revenue funds for the FY17 budget.
Motion made by Bill, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Steve. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Last one is to move the E and D fund, $350,000, to offset the 17 budget.
Is that, is that what you have? Okay, so moved.
Motion made by Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can we try that one again? Because I don't think we have the ayes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Cob, for all of your hard work. This is a fun time of year for Wen, because she gets to audit FY15 and take the auditors through that. She gets to close out FY16, and then she is waiting for FY17 with the rest of us, which moves us to a discussion of the FY17 budget. You have before you a couple of handouts. Currently, we do not have a budget. The timeline, for those who may not know, that the Blackstone Town Meeting, which was held May 31st, voted a number that was higher than what was voted at the Millville Town Meeting on May 9th. So on Monday, June 27th, Millville had a second special town meeting to approve the additional amount of $183,000, which was really an additional $63,000, because the $120,000 had been approved. So that $63,000 was recommended to come out of stabilization, which required a two-thirds vote, and that did not, while it succeeded in the majority, 51 to 49, it did not pass by two-thirds, so it failed. On Wednesday, June 29th, I met with the new Millville Town Administrator, Jen Callahan, along with Chairman of the Selectmen, Mr. Reposa, and Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Crivello, along with Selectman Laura. And that was the first time that a number lower than $63,000 had been offered, and that amount was $40,000. And I took that to the committee on Thursday, June 30th, and the committee chose to move to a supertown meeting, a district-wide town meeting, to see if we could get a budget. The superintendent did not attach the required signature page to that warrant. And so Millville's Town Council challenged any results of that meeting, so on advice of our council, we simply canceled the June 19th district-wide meeting, even though both of our other councils suggested that we could prevail, it would not be worth it. And certainly, we went then back to looking for a way to certify an FY17 budget. This is over $63,000 on a $22 million budget. We met again this afternoon with Mrs. Callahan, and with the same three representatives of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. And because of events that have unfolded in the town of Millville over the last couple of weeks, there is even more pressure on Millville's budget, because Town Hall is structurally, has been declared structurally unsafe for occupancy. And so the same $40,000 additional contribution was offered by the same members of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. This time, it's a little bit different, because the town and the boards would offer that $40,000 to come from operating, which would only require that, a vote in the fall to rebalance the town's budget. So by accepting that $40,000 with clear definition by the Board of Selectmen in Millville, that it would come from the operating budget, we would effectively have an FY17 budget. As we currently do not, we had to petition the state to allow us to operate on a 1/12 budget for the month of July. Typically, school districts, certainly regional school districts, spend between 35% and 45% of their school budget in the first quarter, because we have large payments to make regarding benefits. We are unable to do that right now without a certified budget. So the latest number proposed would give Millville an additional contribution of $160,000, and would lower Blackstone's additional contribution from $467 to $410,000. The combined drop from the school committee's certified budget of $22,35,635 would put us at $21,955,635. That is a .75% increase to the general fund budget. It is very difficult to run a school district, to be competitive in today's environment, when five of the previous 10 years were less than the year before, and this year, we are looking, if that is accepted, at a .75% increase. It is simply not enough to do what we need to do for our students. And we have been through the reasons why, the fact that the state and the federal government are contributing less. The bottom line is, it is our job as the administrative team to provide the very best we can for our students. We have spent months and many meetings to come up with a number that the school committee certified back on June 1st of $22,35,635. This would represent, if the committee were to accept a lower number, the additional $40,000 for combined additional contribution from Millville of $160,000, dropping Blackstone's contribution to $410,000, giving us an additional reduction in an already tight 1% increase to our budget, of dropping it down to .75%. So that, it would be a loss of $80,000. That would have to be decided, what would be cut, what would be postponed. It is not the best situation to be in. Certainly, from a fiduciary standpoint, it would be best if we had a certified budget, so that we could begin to purchase all of the things that we have decided we need, from textbooks to curriculum materials to technology. And we feel strongly that that is what we do need. So while losing an additional $80,000 doesn't seem like a lot, at this point, every dollar is important. And we have gone way below the additions that would be nice to have, and we are really trying to maintain and hold on to what we've already achieved. So it would be up to the committee to either certify a budget that would, in effect, be $80,000 less because of the combined reductions to $21,955,635, or to call for another super district-wide town meeting that only requires a simple majority of who shows up, that the superintendent would, this time, make sure he gets it done properly. And my apologies to all who have been inconvenienced around that. That being said, it would be my recommendation to have a budget. And I think it's very unfortunate that here we are, July 18th, and still being held without a budget. And I think that that, at this stage, is important. It doesn't take away from the fact that next year, this will be done differently, because I will not go through this again, and I don't think the committee, nor the parents and taxpayers in these towns, should have to go through it either. It is my hope that with a town administrator on board, Millville will be able to prioritize their needs, so that a school budget for their own students that reside here and go to school in their home district will not be held up to this late date. And I'd be happy to entertain questions, but I think it's pretty straightforward as to where we are right now. Thank you.
Are you looking for a motion, then, to support that?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to adopt an operating budget of $21,955,635. And in so doing, would enable us to order supplies and begin the school year somewhat on a normal basis, although this is, I'm violently against the way this whole thing was done by the two towns, the one town particularly. I'm thinking more of the interest of moving district forward and equipping the kids to begin the school year. This is a .75 increase, less than 1%, which I think is a sin, but I just want to equip the administrators with what we can give them to start the school year.
Motion made by Steve, is there a second?
I'll second, if it's discussion.
Second made by Bill, discussion.
Is this guaranteed, Millville will put the $40,000 in? They need to go to another meeting to accept that we accepted the lower contribution?
My belief is that, based upon our meeting today, that the next step would be for the Millville Board of Selectmen to authorize the additional $40,000 from operating, and then we would have, in effect, an FY17 budget, albeit a little bit reduced, to be able to go forward.
Can I amend your motion, and perhaps say that if they don't do that at their next Board of Selectmen meeting, that if they don't vote to approve that, that we have a supertown, or a meeting
Excellent. Yeah, absolutely. I like that idea a lot.
I think you have to take away your
Okay. I withdraw the motion.
No, can amend it.
Don't you have to withdraw it first?
No. No. Then you have to
Good idea, Jane.
You have to make a, you have to vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the motion as amended.
So you're making a motion to amend?
To amend
Men my motion.
Steve's motion, by accepting the Millville decreased amount, and so the $160,000 supplemental income from Millville, and $410,000, right? Supplemental from Blackstone, provided that Millville, what would the term be, certifies or agrees or
Would vote to
Vote to
Would vote to, take the money from their operating budget.
Vote to approve that, at their next Board of Selectmen meeting, and if they don't, that we immediately move to a super-town, is that what it's called?
District-wide meeting.
District-wide meeting.
Well, you can put that in the amendment, because we have to meet and then vote to go to a super-town meeting to do that, so.
Couldn't this be our vote, to do it if not approved?
We'd probably have to call another meeting, when and if that happens.
Well, then I...
Sorry, I can't help it.
Okay, I'll withdraw my amendment, then. We can't do it.
I think you can do it. You just can't add the part about the super-town meeting.
I think that was the part of the amendment, though, right?
Yeah, that's my whole point. In other words, if they, if they, if they don't approve, if Millville Board of Selectmen meets whenever their next meeting is, which, next Monday, usually they meet on Mondays, so if it's next Monday, if they don't, if they, for some reason, it's not on the agenda, or they don't get to it, or they, and we get pushed back further, and we get pushed back further, we've defeated our purpose by accepting the money, so that we can move forward, and we would be better served to have the district-wide meeting, and see if we can get the original money that we need to run the school system.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I believe that, obviously, the town of Millville and the Board of Selectmen would be motivated to take the necessary steps to ensure that we have a certified budget at the hundred and sixty thousand dollars of additional contribution. Yes?
Because I do think that if they, if they don't, they renege at their meeting, so we can't, we can only do thirty now, then it wouldn't matter. We come back here, and we have to recertify another budget, and at that point, we could say, no, thank you.
But if we're recertifying the budget at...
Twenty-one, nine, sixty-five.
At twenty-one, nine, fifty-five, we can't go back higher. So, we have to, we have, that would be where our super-town meeting would be, is for that figure.
We can't go back higher?
We, I don't believe, once you re, no, you can't.
It would just be for the forty.
It would just be for the forty.
So, I mean, we haven't done anything yet, so can we continue to discuss?
Yeah.
So, just to clarify a couple of things, when, Alan, when you were going through the dates of events, when we met on...
Thursday, June thirtieth?
Thursday, June thirtieth, to vote on a district-wide meeting, I asked the two members of the Board of Selectmen from Millville, who were in attendance, if that could be done through their meeting, and my, the answer I got was, oh, we still have to go to a town meeting.
Yes, they do, but in the fall, yeah.
That was said, right. That wasn't really clear, in terms of when we were voting to move forward. We voted then to say, no, if you have to go back to a meeting, we'll go for a district-wide meeting, which is what the vote was at that point. The other just clarifying point is, it's great that they're coming up with money now, they need to come up with money during the long process of the budget season. You know, we had two town meetings in Millville, and they had to go to a secret ballot vote, so no one knew what was anyone was doing, and that favors some people on the stage. But now, they come up with this money, that they can move stuff around in the budget. You know, I, I've been involved in this for seven years, and in the Finance Committee in Blackstone, and through the committee here, and it's like this every year. It's an unreliable process. It's absolutely inequitable to the students, and the parents, and the citizens of Blackstone to be handcuffed every single year, because we went through a period in Blackstone, and say, oh, we'll just wait and see what Millville does. And we finally got them moving beyond that mindset, to, the smoothest process I've ever seen was this year, in terms of getting the school approved, and giving us what we need. And we're still in this position, you know, putting the district at risk, decimating it even more than it is. You know, I don't see it getting any better. I don't see the process getting any better next year, to be honest with you. It only hurts the school district, and I'm sick of dismantling stuff. All I've been doing was, in the past three years I've been here, was presenting a budget of what we need, going back and cutting three hundred thousand dollars, or paying it out of our E and D that we save every year. You know, I don't see the process getting better, so, that's all. That's all I'm going to say at this point.
Any other discussion? Okay, so, right now, we have a motion from Steve, and a second from Bill.
For discussion purposes.
Discussion's over.
And we did, we discussed it.
All those in favor of the recertification of twenty...
I would recommend that we do a roll-call vote, because this is important.
Not a secret ballot?
We're not going to do a secret ballot. I think we can do a roll-call vote, to see exactly where we are.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
I guess I'm just concerned that if we move forward with this, and for whatever reason it gets held up in Millville, we're stuck with this new number, even if they delay us meetings, or weeks, or... And our intent is to go forward, just to get a budget to the school.
But you're only stuck until a district-wide town meeting, which any amount could be amended.
No, but it can't go higher.
I believe at a district-wide town meeting, it can.
Oh.
It can be amended higher or lower, or the same. I could get legal counsel to give us a definite answer.
Within, like, three minutes?
I'm pretty confident, once you certify a budget, that's why we certify, correct me
if I'm wrong, but that's why we certify, at a higher number, it comes down, but once it comes down, it can't go back up.
Okay.
Right?
That's what I thought, too. You're right.
So, my...
But you're saying, a special town meeting, basically, tear it up and start over? You can do anything you want? You can go higher, lower, whatever?
I will have to get legal counsel's opinion.
If we don't vote on this now, it pushes us further back, too.
Even further back, and we haven't scheduled the meeting, and we haven't done it.
To say, if we wait for Millville to, you know, approve the forty, and then we'd have to meet again, it's still adding a lot of time.
Yeah, the only reason I'm pushing is, is I want to put some money in his pocket, so he can, he can move.
Well, I think, I think that's the, that's, the kids need to be able to start school efficiently and effectively.
With the budget.
With the budget.
Well, let's not paint a picture that people are not going to be, kids aren't going to be starting school with, you know, no lunch in the kitchen, and no books, and they're going to have stuff, okay? I don't want to paint a picture to the public that we're doing this so that we can open school, you know, with pencils. We have pencils, okay? You know, if it's curriculum that we're ordering, that we can't order, if it's new textbooks that we're, then I want people to say that, because the public needs to know exactly, you know, what we're talking about.
Any other discussion? Okay, again, the motion on the floor is, motion made by Steve, and seconded by Bill, for a recertification of twenty-one million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five. Roll-call vote, yes or no, to recertify at that number? Bill?
No.
Jane?
Yes.
Georgia?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'm going to say yes. Moving on.
Okay. I will follow up tomorrow morning with Millville's Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen, and communicate back to the committee the next steps.
Okay. Report of the Assistant Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I don't, unfortunately, have a lot to report, because of reasons we've already discussed, but one thing I have gotten a chance to do, is to go through our teacher evaluations for this year, and I am proud to report that, looking at all of the final evaluations, ninety-nine percent of our teachers were proficient or advanced, ten percent exemplary, or, yeah, advanced, and eighty-nine percent proficient, and only one percent in the needs improvement, and no teachers in warning. So, that, and again, I want to reiterate that proficient is a very high standard in the state of Massachusetts, so I think parents and the committee, and the community should be, feel pretty happy with the quality of our teaching staff, and that ninety-nine percent of them are proficient or exemplary professionals.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. School Committee forum? Bill?
Public forum?
Uh, sorry. Public forum? School Committee forum?
Wait, wait.
Dan Keefe, Main Street, Blackstone. I just wanted to thank the school committee members from town of Blackstone and Millville, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, for what I've seen, I've been to several of your meetings throughout the course of the year, I watch all your meetings, I watch the town of Millville's meetings as well, and it's been a tough few months for you folks, and, and this, watching this committee, and working with this committee on some different things. You have the best interests of the students of both communities at heart, and that's it. And with the regional agreement proposal, and the budget concerns, and debates that have gone on, I, I'm proud to be a resident of Blackstone, and have you represent the children of the district, and I thank you for that. I did go to the Millville Town Meeting on May ninth, to, you know, I go to a lot of meetings to watch it, and understanding, watching Millville's meetings, Selectmen's meetings, they're in tough shape, you're in tough shape in Millville, and I understand that. But that sixty-three grand was two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, and my concern as a representative of the people of Blackstone is what effect that has on the children of Blackstone that go to school in this district, as well as I have the concern, of course, for the children of Millville, because I am a child of Blackstone Millville Regional School District. So, again, I commend you. I think what was most disappointing, that I witnessed in the whole process, was the last town meeting that Millville had, and when the budget was defeated, when it was defeated, the warrant was defeated, the applause at the end of that, was a sign to me that you're celebrating the lack of funding to educate the children of your community. And it's not an easy job you folks have up here, being elected, and I'll probably get criticized for sitting up here myself, but again, I thank you, and I hope you move forward with the regional agreement that you've been working on, and you, I count on continuing to have my support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? School Committee forum? Bill?
Okay.
I think Tara probably has more, but I know this Friday, there's a fundraiser for the band at Froyo.
Yep, in Lincoln.
In Lincoln. So, hopefully...
Newing to eleven, I think it's twenty percent.
Yeah, you get, whatever you purchase at Froyo, the band gets twenty percent of that cost, so, go have some frozen yogurt on Friday, after noon, I think, eleven or noon, or something.
Yeah, twelve to eleven P.M. And it's not just like the marching band, so people don't, you know, if they don't support just the marching band, it's the whole music program, grades five through twelve, so, that, they're fine.
Georgia?
I'm good.
Steve?
This was a tough one, really, truly, I mean, I wanted the whole sixty-three thousand, no doubt. The thing I've been wrestling with ever since, I lost track of what meeting we had...
When we were asking for sixty-three thousand, we're the villain that was going to kill Millville, because our sixty-three thousand is somehow going to impact five-hundred thousand dollars, and we're going to, we're going to bankrupt the town. And now, this, another thing, suddenly forty thousand is not going to bankrupt the town. So, if you could have come up with forty thousand in March or April, would have made this whole process a lot more palatable for everyone. And again, this is a point seven-five percent increase, less than one percent increase. If you went through the entire Millville budget, you would find lots of things that are much, much higher than that, so.
If you go through the whole state, it's embarrassing, about the percentage increase at schools, yeah.
And unfortunately, we kind of tripped over, and now this spilled in somewhat into the situation in the Millville Town Hall, but the two things are separate. We can't have a sympathy vote. But, again, I just voted because I want to equip the schools, so they can, they can open somewhat normal, you know, it's, otherwise, it would impact things, we have to order some supplies later, and they come in later, and I know the impact that has on a school, you want everything day one, not drips and drops throughout the year, September, October, November. This is not, we're not moving forward, we're not even treading water. We're going down, and it's disappointing, it really is, so, I don't know. I could go on for hours, but, moving on.
I just want to touch base back on regional agreement. At the last meeting, we did say that the regional agreement we proposed last, this past May, was, we're done with it, and that we would consider, possibly next fall, opening up again, whether it be similar to what was proposed, or what, just that we'll look at something else later. So, if people, just to understand, that this regional agreement that was proposed and voted on in May, has ended. It's not what, we're not bringing it back in the fall, or next spring, we're not going to surprise anyone with it, so, just want to clarify that.
The fall 2017.
Right. We might bring a totally new proposal. It's not the proposal that we just brought. That proposal is done, based on our last meeting, and what we all agreed to, and it's